Everyone, thank you all for coming tonight. Tonight is our dedicated workshop for the Board of Education. They will be the only one on the agenda for tonight. And then, just like on Tuesday night, we're going to go through the same process. If any council members have any questions, we could just jump in and feel free to ask them as we go along through the process. So at this point, we'll just turn it over to, I guess, Mary Ann and get started.
Mr. Chairperson, can I say something very quickly before Mary Ann starts? Just as an employee of the Clinton Public Schools, I'm going to recuse myself from any deliberations and discussions this evening. So I just wanted to say that for the public record. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Mr. Chairman, you and I had a discussion. I too am an employee of the school system as a substitute teacher. Feel that I need to recuse myself, I will also recuse myself.
Okay. Anyone else before we start? All right, not Mary Ann, all you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Chris. Thanks for the opportunity. This year is a little different after presenting, what, two weeks ago or so? You know, having to wait to then give you a chance to take a look at materials, digest some of that information. I think begin your process of looking at the town budget as a whole under Carl's direction. And then tonight, after having that time, giving you an opportunity to ask questions. So I know I shared my presentation. I have, I'm ready to give context or answer questions. I think I just want to begin with the fact that the budget that I presented to you on the ninth with Erica, our Board of Ed Chair, really represents our work through budget preparation, pulling together numbers, working with departments, or in our case, cost centers, our building administrators and directors for each of the different areas, refining, making decisions about things that we would move forward and wouldn't move forward. That then culminates in December where I hold individual meetings and start to pull it together. And then I make some decisions as a superintendent about what is being brought forth to the Board as an early draft. And then from there, we do our Board workshops with our administrators present and presenting, just like you do, kind of with Carl doing that. And then finally, a Board of Ed budget workshop culminating in a final recommendation. And then the Board has time and makes a decision. So what you saw kind of represents our couple of months of doing that work and represents the budget that the Board approved and we feel will support the needs of those students in our community. So with that context and you have that information, I can kind of just turn it over to all of you to ask questions or provide any insight, context, or answers that I can do so that you guys do the work of making some decisions going forward.
I guess I'll start before we open up and if anybody else has anything. I think running through everything, you know, that we looked at already, you know, the information that's been provided, as far as I'm concerned personally, you know, when I look at these things, I look at them in a broader, I guess, picture. You know, we fully understand that we need a good education system. We need our kids to be, you know, you know, be fulfilled as they learn. And that's an important part of our town. And obviously, we need that education system and that backbone so that we bring people to this, you know, to this community that understand that. The issue that I think with me personally that I struggle with is just the overall, you know, how do we get to that number kind of, you know, picture? The difficult thing, it seems, that we always face when we do these budgets is, you know, at what point do we have a conversation maybe about consolidating, you know, condensing some positions, whatever it may be? Because the issue that I look at is that we can't continue to do it every year. Obviously, we know there's the biggest part of this budget is, you know, contractual. That puts us in a very difficult position because obviously contracts exist, there's going to be increases, and where do we go to offset these? So, you know, as a town, we want to be able to make sure that we are, you know, developing, we are moving forward on commercial development, which is a big important thing for our town, so that we can offset some of these things. So, you know, my, not concerns, but I guess my questions basically are, what are we going to do as a town going forward? What can we do? What can we do to, you know, put something together so that we're looking at this down the road? This isn't about us now, this isn't about us next year, two years, three years. This is a 10-20, you know, picture that you would have to look at to know that, you know, our education system, the way it sits right now, is that something that's in place that will be successful going forward? You know, can we sustain increases in the Board of Education budget every year? You know, because additionally, obviously, we have operational issues. So, you know, on our side, we have Carl obviously here that does a great job working through that budget, you know, but it's not much as much of, you know, just how do we do it? And I know there's really probably no one answer to any of this because it's a difficult answer to address and it's a difficult answer to, you know, difficult question to answer. But it's got to be something, I think, that we kind of have to open up the conversation and just think about that. Think about what can we do as a town to make sure that we're going all in this, in the right direction so that we have this school system in place that's going to attract young families, that's going to attract people to move here? But we also have to worry about those tax bills that they're going to get every two, you know, every six months, and that they're going to be able to move to this town and afford that. I don't have the answer. I'm not sitting here saying that I have the answer. I think we should have an open and honest conversation as a town and with everybody involved, you know, both sides. You know, I don't like this whole us against them, which is what it always seems to be, the Board of Ed operation stopping. I mean, this is our town, we all live in the town, so we're all under the same budgets, whether, you know, you call it a Board of Ed, you call it an operational budget, it's, you know, it's the town. And, you know, as parents get older, they have grandkids, they want to see their kids go through these, you know, these school systems here because it's important to them as well. So I just wanted to bring that out so that we can maybe take a look at that going forward. We'll open it up obviously to other council members and see what they have, you know, as far as comments going on that end.
Well, and like just to respond to that a little bit, Chris, is I think that's the work that the Board of Ed has done in, at least in my tenure as superintendent since 2016. And I think in every budget that we've brought forward, those are the hard questions that we're asking. So I do, if you look at from the time I stepped into the position in 2016, what our Board of Education has done has really looked at the big ticket items and our efficiencies and how we contain costs. So we opened a brand new high school, we worked really diligently to make sure that we do it, we maintain that building, but we're doing it cost effectively, making sure the HVAC system is operating properly and maintained so that we can keep our utility costs down and not see out, you know, crazy stuff. The other big ticket item is health insurance, right? So we worked really hard and we moved to the state partnership plan, we moved to all of our unions, we negotiated with all of them, and we made that move even before the town did and saved quite a bit of money. In fact, this year's budgeted number, which will come down, which is a good thing if all goes well and the increases get adopted at the state level is what they're saying now. But that's, you know, we're projecting lower in health insurance today than we did four years ago because we made that move. I think the other piece is we closed Pearson. So we took that on, we made really tough decisions about redistricting and looking at how we could do it without going to the town and asking for consultants and, you know, making adjustments. And that was a big ticket item. So I think the Board of Ed has done that. I agree with you. We have to figure it out. We have to figure out how the town sustains. But really, in the end, our operating budgets, if we look at them over the last five years, have been, you know, 1.49, 0.93, 0.72. So they've been very, very low because we've made all those changes. I'm now presenting and the Board is adopting a budget this year in an environment where we don't have those big ticket items to contain costs. But the reality is the costs are going up. Contractual obligations is an area that we work hard to contain. And I think the Board and I would welcome those conversations with the Town Council looking at the big picture. I think part of what we struggle with is, you know, we have an obligation to provide a quality education, as you talked about. We want this school system to be as strong as it can be and attract people. And I can tell you that we have fewer kids choosing alternatives other than the Morgan School. That number has gone from, you know, 30 or 40 a year to like six or seven choosing alternative. So we're making those gains. In the last two years, we've sent a child to an Ivy League school. So I'm really proud of what we've done to contain costs and restructure and at the same time, improving the quality of what we're providing. But costs do go up and what the town can tolerate and all of that are just welcome conversations for us. We agree. And I know my Board of Ed members spend lots of time and we angst and we spend almost all year talking about ways to contain costs. So I welcome that. I think we have a demonstrated record of doing that and partnering with you guys to say, what do we do? But that long-term piece is something we would welcome. I think it's important for us to do that and then determine what's acceptable, like where is that guidance? What do we need? And on an annual basis, that may change depending on what's happening in the town, what the forecast is, what the experiences are. So I would look forward to that. I know the Board of Ed would look forward to those conversations so that we're not kind of in this competitive type of circumstance. We are one community and we've been saying that for a while. I believe that deeply. So I appreciate what you're saying and welcome those conversations.
And just so you know, I wasn't questioning all the work that you did.
I know. But it's a chance for me to share some of our successes as well. I mean, we have, and I know the town has as well. So the more we do that together, I think the better off we are, Chris. And I know my Board of Ed feels that way. So some of them may be on tonight. I just want to say that.
Yeah, no, great. I mean, it's just, you know, when you look at it and there's a big picture and it's, you know, you see it every year and you just get nervous. That's it, you know?
I hear you. I totally get it.
What are we going to do? So Dennis, you have something?
Yeah, I'll start it off. My first question, I have three points actually. The first two are almost identical. Good evening, by the way.
Good evening.
I would like to, if you can, provide me what was the surplus after the 1920 budget? Do you have a number of what your surplus, if there was a surplus, after your 1920 budget?
I absolutely have that, Dennis. So the surplus for 1920 was $1,141,558. I would have to...
That's $1 million?
$1,141,558 is what I have.
Okay, $1,141, okay. $558. My second question is, it's almost identical. You have any idea how this year is going, what our projection for the end of this year is going to look like?
Yes. So I would just, I want to just caveat that last year's surplus clearly was impacted by COVID and our shutdown. And so there were a variety of areas where there was savings. This year as well, there are some areas of savings. We are, right now, it's early, but we've been doing that work knowing that you guys may have that question. So right now, we're probably somewhere around a 2% surplus. So I would say around 700,000 is where, an early estimate. I would say that half of that, half of that is due to savings in COVID, sports, transportation. Those are the two big areas. Our substitute line because we've had difficulty there. And then we've had a number of open positions throughout the year. So we're looking probably, I mean, again, it's early and it's trending, but probably somewhere around 700,000.
Okay.
Could be a little more.
My third question is, as I look at the recent budgets through the past year, I'm a little mystified. 219, 220. For athletics, we spent, or the Board had spent, or Board of Education, $557,124. And in the middle of a pandemic, from '20 to '21, we increased the athletics to 606,828. And I guess I'm a little confused in as much as I thought that there was less athletics going on. And so a jump of 50,000 or more. And then to look to see that for 2020, for '21, '22, you're asking for an additional 10 there, making it 616,000. I guess I'm a little confused. And I say this, as you know, with tongue in cheek because I'm pro athletics to no limit. But I just feel a little confused by the fact that how could the athletics be increasing during a pandemic type of situation?
Okay, so there are savings this year in athletics because fall sports was curtailed, as was winter a little bit. Next year, we anticipate that the pandemic will not be impacting athletics. So, you know, I'm budgeting for our full athletic experience. So you're taking me back now to last year's budget and why there was an increase. But I can tell you two areas of increase. One had to do with some shifting. So we did add an athletic director position. So as I look, and you can see this in your budget book and the Athletics Cost Center, for anyone who wants to look there, it's helpful to share the page. But basically, last year, we reorganized and we had the retirement of our athletic advisor, which was a part-time position. And the Board made a decision to restructure that position. We reduced a position at the high school, eliminated, actually, it was at the elementary school. We eliminated a position and reframed that to expand the part-time athletic director to a .8 athletic director. And then that person also does .2 of teaching at the high school. So part of this is movement. So there was a reduction in the Joel budget of one staff member that was probably about $80,000 or $90,000. And a portion of that was moved into the athletic line item in athletics. It's now called the athletic director. And from 1920, you'll see, it's about a $19,000 increase. And that was increasing the athletic director to a .8, almost a full-time athletic director position. And that was in response to a lot of conversation and requests from the community to really address that area. And we did it while we reduced a different position and we restructured. The other area where I know we had some restructuring athletics in our budget was around site supervision and how we staff our games to make sure that we were meeting the standards of the C I A C and having appropriate personnel and dealing with our officials and maintaining safety. So there was another increase. I can't give you a total, but it was probably in the $20,000 to $25,000 range for all of our sport seasons. Those two pieces make up, I think, the majority of what that increase is. But this year, the increase is very minimal. So we've looked at our trending, but going into next year, we expect to have the full complement of athletics. And therefore, that's why the budget is similar to this year's budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes, Ms. O'Donnell. I'm, uh, thank you for all your efforts, by the way. And I'm certainly a public education guy. And the most important thing for local community is their education, educating our children. But I'm very discouraged during a pandemic and terrible things have happened to our country, 500,000 people lost and our economy is suffering. We have less kids this year than we have next year. We'll have next, excuse me, less kids next year than this past year. But our budget went up $1 million. It's just difficult for me to fathom that. And more importantly, in four years from now, you're projecting a 20% decrease in the number of children that we're going to be educating. Are you also working on a 20% reduction in your budget? That's $7 million decrease, a 2.8, 28 million. That's a terrible decrease, but it's something you're going to have to face.
So I guess the question I have is, as we talk about this, is if the expectation is that we're going to have a budget that comes in at zero or below, that's a, that's a very difficult challenge. And I'm happy to sit down and talk about why our budget tends to go up each year. I think as you look around, you'll see every education budget does increase because all of our costs associated with educating kids goes up. When it comes to staffing and declining enrollment, there's nobody but that has attacked that more than me in the last 15 years. So if you look at the staffing page in the certified staff since 2016, '17, that's the year I took over, my first budget was the 1718 budget. So since 1617, we have reduced 17 certified positions in that timeframe. We've reduced eight non-certified positions in that timeframe. So I guess, you know, and I'm sharing that because I think the Board, on an annual basis, our administrators and myself have continually attacked the fact that we have declining enrollment and we need to continue to reduce our costs and adapt and adjust in thoughtful ways so that we're not facing, you've got to suddenly cut 10 teachers and then programs go, and we don't do it in a way that supports our students' needs. And I think we've done that really thoughtfully. And again, that's a debatable piece, but we are in a point, this is, this is the first year, I think, I'm not proposing a reduction in staff. And a lot of that has to do with the number that is decreasing next year. And I'm going to check the chart right now, so I'm correct. When you look at enrollment reductions, we're looking at for '21, '22, a reduction of 21 students. So those 21 students come from all different grade levels, right? And so when you're trying to do this thoughtfully in a district and not impact valuable programs and to ensure you have really great staff with your students and that we don't push class sizes too high, there are critical junctures where we have to plan for that. So since I've come in, we've, we've made those difficult decisions, we've made the adjustments, we've reduced staff. And I think we've done it in a way that has not had tremendous impact on programs. We've had to eliminate one or two, but we have reduced staff. I think as the Board does their work, we ask ourselves that question, are we staffed appropriately? Because we know 80% of our budget is staffing, right? So I don't just keep staff because we need to keep people. I keep staff because it matters for our programs and our kids. And, and we have had lots of discussion with our Board of Ed about what are appropriate class sizes, what are the programs, what are those turning points? And I can tell you, and I said this to our Board and we talked about it this year, that looking at the enrollment at the middle school, we have an eighth grade class that still is 126 students this year, going into next year, sorry, that's our seventh grade. And that class also saw some decline because of COVID. So there is potential that that class may end up a little higher than what, what the projections show. But even with that at 126, I'm not in a place where I can reduce staffing in a way that won't have tremendous impact at the middle school. But next year, when that eighth grade class moves to the high school, I will be able to, and we'll be looking at probably restructuring a whole team. So I think the Board's approach and my approach has tried to be really proactive, really honest about what the trends are showing us and taking action when we need to. And in fact, we've took more aggressive action in my first two years purposely to be able to bring in a lower budget. We react and we do whatever we need to do related to what the Board of Finance and Town Council will say. But I think when it comes to declining enrollment, we have reduced staff. We have, I can equate what that staff reduction equals to in dollars. If the goal is to get our budget below zero and show a decrease in our operating budget, we're going to be really hard pressed to do that and accomplish what we want to do for education. So...
Ms. O'Donnell, I'm not suggesting that. I'm not suggesting go negative. I'm just suggesting, how do we keep check of our growth? Again, a million dollars here for declining population. Now, if I may, one more, one more point. There's some criticism of the school system that we are administrative rich. You've heard that too, I assume.
I actually have not.
Some are, your teachers feel that you are administrative rich. I'm not saying you personally, I'm saying across the board, we have many directors, assistant directors, supervisors.
Okay.
How do you treat that with a declining population?
So, I just reduced an administrator when we closed Pearson. So we did reduce an administrative position because we didn't need that position based on our consolidation. So I kind of, I do beg to differ a little bit on being administration heavy. And I do that partly because a year or two years ago, two years ago, when we were talking about Pearson, we did just that. We did a comparison to other school districts about our, because you can break out your per pupil costs based on what we spend on administration compared to other schools. And quite frankly, we were very low compared to a lot of surrounding districts. So right now, we have schools that are anywhere from 500 to 660, I think, are our numbers. And in each of those buildings, we have two administrators. So I think our sizes justify the two administrators. And when we look at that load and a lot of them are here tonight, the responsibilities of an administrator are way beyond what a lot of people see. But having two administrators per 500 to 600 students is an appropriate ratio. And I think, you know, there's lots of data, I'm happy to provide some of that to show that. And the Board looked at that. When it comes to special ed, we have two administrators to represent what is a multimillion-dollar budget, but we have no layers under those administrators. I have no building-based special ed, you know, coordinators or program, I have program leaders that get a small stipend, but I don't have them, I don't have PPT coordinators that other districts have. So we have two administrators in special ed. And I think the budget and the number of students really and the programs we run in district to keep kids here do justify those two administrators. And then other directors, I have a business manager, I have a technology director, and I have a director of facilities. I mean, that's my administration. And I have a food service director who gets paid basically out of his profits, we cover his health insurance. So I don't, I know people, well, you're saying people are saying that. I think when we closed Pearson, we did reduce an administrator rather than try to move that. And I really don't think we're, I have an assistant superintendent and myself. So when you compare that structure with other districts, I think it's very comparable, Mark. So I'm not sure where that's coming from, but I'm happy to provide some additional data just straight out. This is what it looks like and this is what other districts are spending on administrators. But I'm surprised, frankly.
I believe that much of the conversation surrounding the administrators concerns the amount of dollars from the education budget that funds the administrators that we have. The issue, the overreaching issue is the fact that the budget is, you have requested an increase to your budget of $979,000. And yet, the education system itself isn't providing anything new as of this year. Now, I'm not saying that they have to by any means. What I'm saying is that we're paying more for what we have received in the past. It's the same program, it's the same people, the same goals, but it's costing us almost $1 million more. And that's where people's concerns come in, is that the increase to the budget is going toward salaries for the same people that are there. I'm looking at the athletic director that's in here, he's a .8, his .8 salary, I don't know who it is, is $80,000 a year. That is a very highly paid position. And I'd be curious where you arrived at this figure from essentially out of nowhere since the position didn't exist three years ago. You had a, you had someone who was a part-timer who oversaw the athletic department, they weren't an athletic director. And frankly, I kind of questioned the need for adding a position such as that at that pay scale at this moment in time. Another area that I have a question about is, four years ago, the Jack Cross added a fourth guidance counselor. Every year, I have a problem with that. That population is declining steadily, year after year after year. And I know that when that, when the population of that school was 600 and above, they had three guidance counselors and it, and no internet, no self-searching, no applications on your own, and that functioned quite well. And to me, a fourth guidance counselor in this age and era seems superfluous. I mean, I know that nobody wants to go and look a person in the eye and say, we don't need you anymore. But as someone who has watched this budget just astronomically escalate for 10 years with this population decline, I just, I, I know that a lot of this increase is going, it's not filtering down to the kids. That's what I'm going to, that's where I'm coming to. It's not like they're extraordinarily educated as a result of an extra $1 million a year. I'm not seeing it. But what I am seeing is the... But what I am seeing is the line outside the food bank every Wednesday afternoon, where there are double layers of cars lined up at three o'clock every afternoon for families that cannot afford food. When your typical employee of the school system is very well compensated for their time, and they are, they are very well compensated, please go explain to those people who are, have lost their jobs or have had their jobs minimized in this economy that we're in, that are standing there with their hands out asking for food. Tell me why the athletic director is getting a nine percent raise this year for a job that didn't even exist, for, he's making, what, eighty thousand dollars for a point eight position at the high school? I mean, I, I can't, to me, that's, that's out of control.
I'm happy to address each of the things you brought up. So the athletic director. The athletic director was a response to years of requests about management of our athletic programs and the increasing requirements from CIAC and all of the things that we need to do. The Board of Ed did it in a means of actually in eliminating a position and adjusting this position, it actually still resulted in a savings overall. It did, we reduced the staff, but we added a partial of staff back to address a need and to address something that people had looked for. Our participation rates in athletics have increased and we've expanded those programs for our students. His increase in the budget book does look like a big increase. It actually was budgeted wrong. His increase or salary increase is one point four percent next year. It was budgeted wrong in last year's budget. His salary is based off of the teacher salary schedule. So this is a person who does have an administrative degree. He's being paid in the teacher salary contract and that salary for the full position is a point two. So he teaches, technically teaches one class and then his other duties are associated with the athletic director. So we didn't, Board of Ed didn't pull it out of thin air. We based it on a model that is typical around us. We did a lot of research, research in looking at what the needs were and made a decision in this, um, last year to make that adjustment when we had the opportunity to do so. So it is based on the teacher contract and his increase next year is actually one point, I'm going to get it wrong, but I wrote it down, is actually one point. Sorry. One point.
Why would an athletic director, if the athletic director is point eight percent, point eighty athletic director, why is he being paid at the teacher's salary? Is there a, is there a study showing what athletic directors normally make? That is an extraordinary amount of money.
In fact, athletic directors in a couple of neighboring districts are paid at an administrative salary level. So we made a decision as.
Can we justify that in our current climate? Can we, can Clinton justify that?
And the Board of Ed can, yes. Uh, the districts around us has full-time athletic directors.
Doesn't mean we have.
Uh, Christine, here, here. Um, Mary Ann.
I, I just want, I, I just want to address one last thing with, with Carol. I understand the increase. I understand the angst about the increase in a pandemic year. There is nobody but myself and this group of administrators, our teachers and our families who have lived through a year of the impacts of COVID and the pandemic on education and what we've had to do and pivot and do within our budgets, not looking for more money, not coming back and being able to open our schools, bring our students back in full in the fall, respond to the, you know, increases in transmission in this community, which were higher than other places, and still reopen our schools to bring all of our students back is remarkable. And I'm going to thank every one of my administrators who are there. With that said, we can always look at salaries and is that in the market or whatever? And I can tell you, I'll provide you the administrative comps. And the administrators actually negotiated a very, very small increase that was well below the state average. They could have pushed further and they didn't. And they took a one point two five percent increase this year in their salary because they knew what this town and what we were dealing with with the pandemic. So I, I get it. I get that the number is difficult, but I, I beg to differ when you say that we're not getting anything for it. And, and the guidance.
I didn't say we're not getting anything, I said, we're not getting anything new for it.
Well, but we, but here's the bottom line is, do we need new? Or do we need to re-engage our students and our families and our education next year as we come back into our buildings, hopefully coming out of a pandemic? And I can tell you that, that our staff, our administrators, our families and our students are traumatized. And we're all going to have to work together collectively to come through. Every bit of data and research in education shows that it's the teacher and the people working with kids in the classroom that matter. So if, if, you know, Mr. Richards talks about we're administratively heavy, if we are, then that's on us. I don't believe so. I believe our dollars are going to the people who are working and nurturing our children so that they can come out of this pandemic, they can make up the loss and they can accelerate their learning. But that doesn't just happen like, oh, we're all done, come on back in the classroom. That comes with a lot of social emotional support and helping kids and our families navigate. So that guidance council at the high school is one of the most critical positions we can have as we go into next year. Down the road, as our numbers continue to move into the high school, will we make a consideration? Absolutely, every year we'd be looking at it. But the needs in this community for our children and our families are tremendous. And coming out of a pandemic is even more. So that's something I'm, obviously I'm really passionate about, Carol, and I know that, that we disagree about that. But right now, cutting services for support for kids is not an area that this Board of Ed or myself or my administrators felt was appropriate for next year.
Mary Ann, what would you say?
I'd like to speak. Um, so Mary Ann, I, I would like to personally say.
So hang on, hang on, hang on.
Mary Ann, I, I would like to personally say, you know, right out of the gate, I, I think everybody just needs to take a deep breath. You know, I, I would like to say we need to be thanking our administrators, the facility, the support staff. Everybody's pulled together for the families in our community and they're dealing with their own stresses and their own personal lives. Everybody, as Mary Ann has says, been traumatized by the exposure to COVID. Um, I think we should be thanking the Board of Education for their leadership and support they provided through this crisis and everybody in the Clinton Public School System. We need to thank you for willingness to change at a moment's notice to, you know, closing our school systems and our buildings and pivoting to, to be able to provide the technology that our children need to be able to continue and have some sort of structure. I mean, I, you know, the, the fact that you've been able to pull together and open our schools back up. I have heard every parent out there saying, when they told their children that they are going back to school, their children were thrilled. They said, yay, that's wonderful, we're going back to school. So from, from my standpoint, I think, I, I have worked with you for many, many years, Mary Ann. I know you're incredibly diligent. You do not go beyond what our, our community can handle in terms of budgetary standpoint. And I'm, I'm just a little frustrated from the tone of this council that, like I said, I, I hope everybody can just take a step back and ask constructive questions. But, you know, it, it's a little bit intense. Um, and I think right now we need to be a little more respectful.
I'm probably making that a little bit intense as well. And I apologize because I am passionate and we've lived through a really difficult piece. I think the bottom line for me is I'm happy to share anything, but I know how hard our board has worked at these conversations and our administrators. And, and when it comes to specific line items, I, I don't mind the questions or the explanation and share what our thinking was, but, but these things were done thoughtfully. And if they weren't and there's an area you bring up, then shame on us and we'll go back and take a look at it. With that said, we understand that this is a process and we understand the tasks that all of you guys have trying to figure out what inappropriate increases. And we get it and we've always partnered with you and we will. And if you come back and say, we just can't sustain this, we'll go back and figure it out. But, but this is what we're charged to do and the Board of Ed is charged to do. And I think they felt very strongly, um, everybody who voted, voted in favor of this and participated in the workshops and feel that this is the budget that best represents what we need for our schools. And I think they did it in a way that's fiscally conservative. With that said, if we can't support it, you guys are going to give us that direction and we're going to go back and see what we can do. I shared with you that our health insurance costs are probably going to be adjusted. And we're looking at our initial numbers if things come in where they, where they will. At, at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we think that we can shave off of health insurance. I know the ECS funding, I didn't have anything to do with that, but that's a boon to the town. We're not going to have the cut. So if we need to go back into our budget, then we're going to go back in. If you say we can't afford this and we need to cut. But I think as Chris started, the conversation around what's sustainable. If you tell us we can't sustain more than one percent every year, then I can tell you there will be an impact on our, on our education. I, I don't know what the number is, what we try to do every year. Last year I brought it in, you know, point seven two or whatever it was at the end. So I, I think we try to do that and we try to work with you. And if I am, I probably am getting a little bit defensive because I think some of this are pieces that we're passionate about and we thought a lot about. So I'm sharing that back to you and I apologize if it comes across a little emotional. But I, I feel really strongly about the social emotional needs of our students and how critical our staff is. If we need to cut staff, we're going to do what you, you know, what you guide, but we're going to protect that because that's going to be the most important thing as we recover, is having the right people working with our kids.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And I, I just want to interject, um, you know, I, I appreciate Christine's comments, but I don't think anybody needs to take a step back. We need to take a step forward because we're doing the right thing by having a discussion. We're having an open and honest discussion about our community, about our town and about how we go forward. Okay, so everybody is going to be passionate and you should protect, everybody protects what they have. And I get all that. Nobody, I don't think anybody on this council is going to sit here and say, we don't, you know, respect what the teachers have done in these classrooms and what the administration has gone through during a pandemic. Everybody understands that. Nobody's fighting that, nobody's talking about that, nobody's, nobody's poo-pooing that at all. So that just needs to go, this is about a budget, this is about what we need to do as a town, and this, this is all about that, that and only that. So, you know, we do appreciate what's going on and everybody's passionate about it because just like there's, I, I know parents are happy that their kids are going back to school. Who wouldn't be? That's where kids belong, in the classroom being taught. So, you know, that being said, that's not what this is about. And, you know, you know, what do we sustain? I don't know. I don't think anybody can sit here right now and say, we do know what it's going to be. But, but these, these are conversations that are good, as far as I'm concerned. Because now it's out on the table, everybody understands what's going on and then we can work together, together and discuss that. That's what we would like to discuss, how everybody thinks we can work together to get us to where we need to be going forward. Because like you said, you know, this may not be sustainable, maybe it's not, I don't know. But you can't figure something out if you don't have an open and honest conversation about it. And these questions being presented to Mary Ann, to the Board of, to the Board of Education, this is where it has to start. It's never been, you know, we, we got to get away from, you know, this council's seated here year two. This is, we're year two on this budget issue. Okay, so just like everything else, we're all dealing with the same thing. It's all new to everybody. You know, we're lucky on the operational side because we got Carl. So he knows how to put a budget together. He knows how to fix those things on the operational side and where things are. For us, council members and the people that have asked these questions, the question is because we need answers. We just like to know. That's what I'm saying. So, I mean, I don't apologize for.
All right, for my passion and answers, all right.
That's why you got your job. So, you know, we need to be passionate on our side, you're passionate on our side. I think it's very constructive conversation about what we're going to be doing going forward. And I mean, so that, that, I just wanted to make that clear because we're not here to bash the Board of Education, the administration, we're just trying to help our town at the end of the day. So that's it, just like you are. We're all just going to work together.
Very well said, Chris, thank you.
Thank you. Um, anybody else has any comments? Eric, nothing? Today at a desk meeting when you don't talk.
Tim?
Tim Singh, so is there, again, anybody else have any other questions for Mary Ann?
I have plenty of comments, but I can't speak.
Oh, right, right, oh God.
Tim, you know, you still have the opportunity to ask questions. It doesn't mean you can't ask questions. If you need to recuse yourself from a vote, that's another thing.
I don't have questions, I have comments, Christine, so I have to recuse myself from those comments.
Anybody else?
I, okay, I, I, Mary Ann, you know that I always, at the end of the day, I come around, I know what a fantastic job you guys do. And this has been a year to beat all years. It's been, I mean, just making it up from day to day with terrible, with no, with, with guidelines that were amorphous and moving from day to day, a moving target. It was, it's been terrible. And if parents ever appreciated teachers more than they do today, I'd be really surprised to find out when that would be. But I have to get back to the average Clinton taxpayer. I mean, our average income per, per household in Clinton is about seventy five thousand dollars. And in this, um, in this situation we're in, lots of people, lots of mothers who were working, you know, at, um, service-type jobs that disappeared in a pandemic and they're, are, are now looking for help everywhere they can get it. What would you say to those parents about a nine hundred and seventy nine thousand dollar increase? Not a, not to the increase to the existing education budget? When they're in that, in that food line, what would you say to them?
So.
Because they're, they're hanging on by their nails.
Hi, and, and my, our job and the Board of Ed's job is to bring in the lowest budget we can and support our schools. So many of those people, our kids have their children with us who are also receiving their education, who may be receiving second language services, who may be receiving special services, support or intervention support, may be involved in extracurricular athletics. They, they also send their kids to our school where they are fed and they are nurtured and they are cared for. I think if, if you talk to a single taxpayer and say, it's almost a million dollar increase in the Board of Ed budget, I think that's a, that's, of course it's shocking, right? But when you look at it in context, which is what Carl is doing, which is what we all have to do, it's what's the impact on an average taxpayer? And that's, that's the difficult decision, right? But, but I guess my struggle, and I think year after year, and, and Carol, you know, I totally respect you. We've, we've gone back and forth. I understand where you're coming from.
It's our annual event here.
And, but in the end, I think we want the same thing for Clinton. And I said that to every one of you that, that I've had the opportunity to work with. But, but I guess the, the context that I have is, this is less than, you know, it's, we're at two point nine two, right? Is that, that's where the budget is and we worked higher and we've worked to get it down to that. In the past three years, we have done everything we can to contain the costs for increases in our district. This is the year, so it's the year, that I don't have a major change to contain those costs. But the, the salary increases alone are negotiated through the, the bargaining, collective bargaining that's established by the legislature in the state. And quite frankly, as hard as the board works to negotiate those contracts, we're still bound by mediation and, and if it goes there, and we have taken it there to arbitration. So I don't know. And, and I would be happy to have those conversations with the town council to say, what's an appropriate increase? Because it doesn't feel good for the board to do all this work, for my administrators to do this work for me, and then say that it's not okay. Like, so that idea of having conversation about what can be sustained and what makes sense for us as a district and understand the underlying principles of why we have a million dollar increase. And I, I showed you the breakdown, it's salary increases for our staff. But again, we've reduced twenty five staff in the last four years. So it's not like we're not addressing that. What would it be if we hadn't taken those actions? That's a good question. And then it's health insurance, which is going to come down. So that increase is actually going to be less when we get there. And as you guys work through this, because Carl and I are going to work on where we think we're going to land with health insurance and make some decisions. But I don't, I, my answer is, we are a single community. And when costs go up on the town side or the costs go up on our side, we're in this together and we have to make determinations together. Board of Ed charged, my charge is to bring it to you and then work side by side with you to respond to what you say could be sustained. And we'll do that. If you told me I had to come in at zero and the Board of Ed, then we would do everything we could to respond to that. But without, without that mandate, we're going to come in as tight as we can. And some years it's less than one and we've cut things and we haven't brought things forward. I, I don't, I don't know how to respond, I guess, or how to bring a budget forward that isn't going to disappoint the town council unless we get some direction going into this, right? Because we do everything we can, we do our charge by state and by what the community is asking us to do and what you're asking us to do. And then if it's not okay or the funding isn't there, it's not going to work for this community, then it comes back and you guys say, this isn't going to work and we need you to make some cuts. We're happy to participate in that. I think we have. I think we have. Every year I've been here, we have come to the table and said, all right, let's see what we can do. But I also go back to the, you know, the survey, and what we get is, we want our schools strong, and we want all of these things. The board very judiciously makes decisions so that we contain costs, but can continue to improve our district. And I'm proud. I think we have improved the district. But it will cost more. It'll cost more every year. I don't know of any districts, other than those that have class sizes of thirty-two, who had to go full remote for a long time, who have had zero budget increases. So, what is an acceptable increase? That's the question I ask all of you. Is, is there a target every year that is better for us to work towards? But then, then we're gonna work towards that budget, right? Rather than saying, what is the lowest budget we can bring forward? So, I don't know the answer. I know the answer to that, Mom, is that we care for and nurture the children in this community, and we get great results. And we do get great results, and those results have improved in the last five years. And like I said earlier, we actually have a student who was accepted at Harvard this year and is going. Last year, we had a student accepted at Yale. So, people are noticing us. People are seeing what's happening in Clinton, and our students are thriving. With that said, forty-three percent of them, as you're talking about it, qualify for free and reduced lunch. That's a huge number, and that impacts us in terms of what we need to do in the classroom. So, the board and I and my administrators, my teachers are balancing all of those demands. But the research says the money goes to the people in the classroom, and then you make sure it's effective. And I would argue that what we've done in the classroom and our staffing has been effective, and we've trimmed it accordingly, and we will continue to do so. I think I have a track record of that. So, I get it. We're here to partner. We're here to respond to, you know, what you guys say as you start to move through this. And if you come back and say, we need to, you know, make some cuts and bring this budget down because we can't sustain it in town, and the impact on the taxpayer is too much, then that's, that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
And we'll do it to try and protect the kids. And I think the board and I have a legacy of that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Last comments? Anyone? Well, if we're all good now, and once again, thank you to everybody. We really do appreciate all that you've done for the community, knowing what you've been working through the past year. So, please understand that. I mean, we, we do take that into consideration, and it is hard, and it's gonna be hard for everybody, and it'll continue to be hard, hopefully, maybe for the next year, but not any longer than that, because we're, we're all tired of, of going through a COVID world. So, it'd be a lot easier if we could just get back to normal. So, again, thank you all very much. We really do appreciate it. And again, thank you all the council members, Carl, Mary from the meeting, and we will all talk to you soon. Thank you again.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll be there next week. If you have additional questions, please don't hesitate to, to put them forward, and I'll be there to respond. And I know I speak for the board that this is a partnership, and we all want the same thing for our community. So, more to come.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, Mary Ann.
Good night.
Good night.
Do we make a motion to end the meeting? And you hear that motion?
I'll make it.
You need one?
Hello. Well, I don't know. Maybe we do, maybe we don't.
I'll make the motion. Then hurry up and make a second.
Oh, I just got, I, all of a sudden, you know, boom, I go, uh, I think the last time we did, I'm not sure. Maybe we don't need him.
Well, I think, yeah, I think Chris is gone, and Christine's gone.
Quit laughing and help us, Carl.
Yeah, he's smiling away.
It's a workshop. You can do it. It's a building suspenders thing, but, yeah, I'm not sure you need it for a workshop.
All right. Good night, everybody.
No, just say good night. That's it, then.
Good night.
And when's our next meeting now? Tuesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Woo-hoo.
Thursday again?
Thursday's capital on the rest of the town budget.
Oh, yes, that's right. Capital on town budget. Okay. Good night.
All right.